Everybody, welcome to the Select Board meeting of June 17, 2025. Guyna, would you start us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Guyna. Okay, at this time, can I have approval of the minutes of June 3, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Aye. At this time, we'll do some new public business. Please go up to the podium, introduce yourself, and we're gonna increase it to three minutes or fewer. The clerk does have a timer, but if you need more time, just let us know. Anybody?
Mr. Bradstreet.
Mr. Bradstreet, come on, Bill, get up there. Come on, you gotta get up there and say something.
Bill, there's three minutes.
And the time starts now.
Again, Bill Bradstreet, town meeting member, precinct one. How are we doing? Are we working on it?
We're working on it.
Okay, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? All right. So I think what we'll do, if it's okay, I think we'll move maybe item five up because we'll wait for the appointments for D to be, if everybody's okay with that?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. So let's, the board will vote to accept gifts in accordance with MGL Chapter 4453A. And, let's see.
Is Chris here?
Is Chris here? Chris Ian won here.
I just talked to him, he said he was coming.
I guess we go right to the police chief.
Okay, should we do that? Yeah, I guess we'll move things around a little bit.
If that's okay with you.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Chief, would you like to go up? We're gonna move, let's see, so we'll move number six. The board will hear a quarterly update on activities in the Danvers Police Department, and we have the chief here. Thank you, chief, for stepping up.
Yeah.
Good evening. Hopefully this works a little better than last time. We're gonna try the new screen here. We'll start off by discussing some of our recent promotions that occurred effective May 4. We had a long process. They took the civil services last September. We had an assessment center back in December. The grades were released in February, and we were able to make promotions effective May 4 of 2025. Sergeant Derek Collet was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. After the end of the school year, Lieutenant Collet will transition to the role of the officer in charge of the day shift and also serve as accreditation manager for Kalia. Detective Michael Moke was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Detective Sergeant Moke will assume the role of the criminal investigation division as a division commander and will run our CID division. Officer Michael Lima was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Sergeant Lima has been assigned to the evening shift as patrol supervisor under the direction of Lieutenant Sullivan, who's here tonight. There we go. Officer Jeff Smith, one of our school resource officers, was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Again, at the end of the school year, Sergeant Smith will transition to the role of the community service division commander. And Officer Ryan Shallow was promoted to the rank of sergeant as well. Sergeant Shallow has been assigned to the split shift as patrol supervisor and will work under the direction of Lieutenant Paulsley. We are currently still trying to schedule a time for swearing in. We have one promotion kind of pending right now, so as soon as we have a date and time, we'll make sure the invitations go out to the Select Board in case they want to attend. Oops. Current staffing levels, I know this is always a topic of discussion. Currently, student officer Honan is doing well at the NECC Academy. He expected to graduate on August 15, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. After graduation, he will participate in an eight-week field training program. One officer remains on extended leave due to a job-related injury. We're hoping to have him back maybe by mid-July or hopefully August. We currently have one vacancy due to retirement this past year. Effective July 1, we'll have an additional patrol officer, thanks to the vote by the Select Board Finance Committee in town meeting, which will increase our staffing by one. Then we got news the other day that we may have an additional retirement after the first year, possibly in February. So we will begin the recruitment process for up to three offices in the upcoming weeks with HR, and our goal is to enroll these offices in the October 14 Academy in April. They expect to graduate in April of 2026. Want to talk a little bit about community engagement through social media. After our last meeting in March, Captain Samuel, myself, and Doug McCully, our crime analyst, worked on creating some of these little snapshots. So these have gone out every month from March, April, and May, and just gives the community a little idea of what's going on in the community. It's not inclusive of everything going on, but just a snapshot of some key information. We've gotten some pretty decent feedback from this, from recommendations that we're trying to incorporate as well. So this usually goes out in the middle of the month.
Oh, sorry.
9:00 p.m. routine. Also, in April, we started a new campaign. Go back one. There we go. After we had three separate car breaks involving unlocked vehicles in April, we decided we were gonna try to participate in the 9:00 p.m. routine public service campaign. The 9:00 p.m. routine is created in 2017 by a sheriff's office in Florida. It's a reminder to residents to remove valuables from their vehicles, lock the vehicles' doors and their residences, and keep lights, exterior lights on if possible, and alarm their security systems. On April 7, 2025, we posted our first post about this. This is a sampling of different posts that we had put out over about a week's period. If you want to go to the next slide. Then on May 18, we had numerous incidents on the early morning hours of the 18th where 13 vehicles, unlocked vehicles were entered. That's probably a conservative number because there was no actually breaking into the vehicles, just opening unlocked doors. I'm sure some people didn't report it to us, so 13 is probably a conservative number. In addition to those 13 vehicles being entered, we had two vehicles stolen. One vehicle was recovered a few streets away from the residence. We think those were hiding that out in case they got chased, they could have a second vehicle to get to. And one vehicle was recovered days later, and it was believed to be used in a series of car breaks in Stonem. A third vehicle was actually recovered from Lexington that was stolen early in that evening up on 95 in the area of where the car breaks were. So in these breaks, all vehicles entered were unlocked, and the stolen vehicles were unlocked, and neither the key fob or the keys were left inside that vehicle. Thus, the 9:00 p.m. routine about locking your vehicles, taking your keys, leaving lights on. Between May 16 and May 28, several communities saw an increase in motor vehicle-related crimes. There's close to 100 unlocked vehicles entered and 16-plus vehicles stolen over that two-week period. Involved communities included Danvers, Belmont, Waltham, Lexington, North Reading, Lincoln, Weston, Reading, and Wellesley, and we believe they're all somewhat connected loosely. Right around May 28, four juveniles aged 13 to 16 from Lynn were arrested in Wakefield after they rammed a Wellesley police cruiser and fled, and were finally stopped by the state police in Wakefield. That vehicle was found on a Waltham. Some crime statistics. So for March 14 was our last period of time till last Friday. We've had 62 arrests, 35 summonses, seven hearings, 13 warrant applications, and three people placed in protective custody. For a total of 113 arrests for the year to date, 83 summonses, 16 hearings, 21 warrant applications, and six protective custodies. Year-to-date, from January 1 to June 13 last Friday, we've had 11,970 calls for service. Again, some of our top locations are target with 140 incidents, 78 were shoplifting incidents. Those were follow-up investigations, E-91 follow-ups. RCA up on Lindell Street, again, law and medical aids, court orders, and inclines walking away from the facility. Walmart with 83 incidents, numerous 911 follow-ups, medical aids, and accidents on the parking lot. Costco with 63, with mostly motor vehicle accidents, 911 follow-ups and medical aids, and then Liberty Tree Mall with 57 calls, mostly youth disorders, follow-up investigations and medical aids. Some crash data from the first, like, three months, then last three months. From March 14 to June 13, we've had 252 accidents reported to us, and we've completed 81 accident reports. The reason why there's a difference there is a lot of the accidents we respond to are in parking lots, which we do not write accident reports in private property unless there's a fatality, and other ones are very minor accidents where there doesn't meet the threshold requiring an accident report to be completed by the officer. So to date, we've had 471 accidents reported and 148 accident reports submitted. This is a little heat map of locations of accidents. Green being lighter. When you see the red, that's meaning the more concentration of accidents. Again, we see Andover Street in the area of Route 1 in 95. Again, all those accidents are, people come off the ramp, car stops, car behind it stops, first car goes, it stops, second car doesn't stop and hits the rear ends them. It's a very common accident we have there all the time, usually do it in detention. Same area on Walmart, on 114 is a busy area, a lot of cars coming out of Walmart, trying to beat the light, that's an area we see accidents, and then the bottom of the screen is down by Sylvan and Endicott Street. So about traffic enforcement activity for the past few months. From March 14 to June 13, 460 stops during selectives. So selectives are assigned to offices at a predetermined area, usually about a half hour to 45 minutes, usually based a lot of times on either traffic complaints or resident complaints. We had 317 citations through either D-DAX or through grants. So the grants are through highway safety, and they are dedicated to doing traffic enforcement for a period of time. Each month, we have a different kind of topic. This month is speeding. Last month was crosswalks, so every month they give us what they want to see us do enforcement on, and we'll work with the offices to do those grant hours. D-DAX is called Data-Driven Approach to Crime and Traffic Control. So the idea of D-DAX is, is you locate areas such as 114 Andover Street that have both high accidents and some high crime, and you almost do like a saturation patrol. We'll have two or three cruises out there, sometimes four, for about a half hour to 45 minutes to an hour, and basically the idea is to stop as many cars as you can just to show a lot of police activity, and the idea is hopefully to deter crime and reduce accidents. Then 335 traffic stops, those are just officers driving around who see someone run a stop sign, see someone on their mobile device, those are officers initiated. So the total from March 14 to June 13 was 1,112 traffic stops. Year-to-date, 1,761 traffic stops. Top violations, again, speeding at 331 citations, crosswalk violations, 119, and use of electronic devices at 83. Youth complaints. Since March 14 to last Friday, we've had 46 youth complaints. Obviously, the weather's been getting nicer and the kids are out and around more. The year-to-date totals, 19 were at the Liberty Tree Mall and/or Endicott Street. Endicott Street is usually consisting of Endicott Street towards the Market Basket Plaza, 11 when the downtown area. I look at the downtown area from pretty much High Street at 128 down to Maple Street, Maple and Locust, and then surrounding streets. So if Cherry Street, Cottage Ave, Alden Street, I consider that downtown for these statistics. 10 were at McDonald's at 77 High Street. Nine were at random locations around town. Again, you know, one was up on Center Street, next one was up by Conifer Hill, so they're kind of really spread out. We've had four at 20 Locust Street, which is the corner grocery, and then four at undisclosed residents, I'm not gonna mention the location. This was an incident where a resident was having youth in the neighborhood doing ding-dong ditch on a regular basis at like 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. Sergeant Smith from the School Resource Officers worked with the homeowner, got some video surveillance, was able to identify the youth involved, had a meeting with the parents and the students, and that problem is ended. So that was a good outcome. Some other responses that we've done as well. Members of the Community Service Division, which is Sergeant, Lieutenant Collet and Sergeant Smith, right now have a meet with management from McDonald's on numerous occasions, on High Street, again, on CVS, and most recently at the Corner Grocery Store. During these conversations, we're encouraging the management to call us when there are problems, help us identify the problem individuals so that we can work with them to identify them, speak to the parents, speak to the children. For example, the Corner Grocery Store, we've had four complaints, and speaking with the management, he says essentially it's one person causing the problems. So we're trying to work with him now to get that, identify that individual so we can have a discussion with him and his family. Officers performed directed patrols. Officers performed walk and talks and community policing initiatives in the downtown area. And again, officers continue to address concerning behavior when youth identified. So from March 14 to June 13, little reduction in directed patrols, but you see a huge increase in community policing initiatives. The officers are encouraged to go downtown, spend time after school in the morning and the evening. A lot of the time, the officers go together, and they'll walk the square together and talk in businesses, grab a coffee, so I think you've, hopefully seen them downtown a little bit more. Next topic is scams in the community. Over the past year, we've seen a large increase in cryptocurrency scams. Victims are usually pressured into making large withdrawals of cash and deposit this money, these funds into a crypto wallet through a crypto ATM. Currently, we have numerous crypto ATMs in the community, most are at gas stations and convenience stores. Victims have deposited thousands to tens of thousands of dollars into these machines, and our ability to successfully investigate these incidents is based upon timing notification. Typically, a 12 to 24-hour delay in reporting this to us significantly impacts our ability to investigate these crimes. In the last six months, six scams have been reported to us totaling $141,890. To date, detectives have seized $73,190 via search warrants to these ATM machines. On the left-hand side, this is what a crypto ATM looks like. Again, typically, they're at some of the gas stations in the community, some convenience stores, and then on the right-hand side is a copy of a fraud alert. So we were proactive, we went out to all these machines, and we post this information next to every machine that basically says the U.S. government doesn't take cryptocurrency, you know, be careful who you're sending this to. Once you send this money, it's typically gone. Again, it's scary, the amount of money these people are putting into these machines, and typically preying on the elderly to do so. Few success stories. This is an example of a crypto ATM that we seized. You can see it wrapped up in tape, and you can see the order next to it, basically saying that this machine has been temporarily seized, it contains evidence of a crime, until further notice, it is unlawful to access this Bitcoin ATM, attempted to access it as a criminal offense, and how to contact us. Couple of success stories we've had this year so far. In November of 2024, a 70-year-old woman fell victim to a law enforcement scam. She withdrew $42,000 from various ATMs around the North Shore and then deposited that money into the crypto ATM. Detective Sergeant Moke and Detective Gaffney worked with the Essex County District Attorney's Office to freeze the funds and contacted an analyst from the NESP, which is the New England State Police Information Network, for assistance in creating a blockchain analysis. These blockchain analyses try to identify how the money went to the ATM and then how it spreads out, and it's amazing how fast and how quickly these cryptocurrency wallets transfer money into more and more wallets. So that assists us in locating where the money went to. Over the course of several months, Detective Sergeant Moke wrote and executed five search warrants with the assistance of District Attorney Pedalano. As a result of the investigation, Essex County District Attorney's Office was able to seize a sizable amount of Bitcoin currency, and then ADA Pedalano filed a motion in May of 2025 at San Francisco Court to return the funds to the victim. Later that month, we were able to get that victim a check back for $41,900. So she only lost $100 out of what she originally lost. This is the exception, not the norm. These are very difficult cases to prove, and they're very difficult to get the money back. A lot of the banks that they're dealing with are across the country, across the world, so this is, again, the exception, not the norm, but this is a great case that Detective Gaffney and Sergeant Moke worked on. Contractor scams. Back in our January meeting here, we learned about an incident in the community where a resident was a victim of a contractor scam. Again, Detective Sergeant Moke contracted the victim, initiated an investigation. Over two months, Detective Moke worked closely with ADA Mello from the District Attorney's Office, writing three search warrants and numerous administrative subpoenas. Ultimately, Detective Moke worked directly with the Fairbolt County Sheriff's Department in Minnesota, which again was difficult because Minnesota would not honor our search warrants, so he worked with the Sheriff's Department out there to give them the information so they could write a search warrant to investigate the incident. Based on Detective Moke's hard work and ADA Mello's hard work and diligence, the bank returned at least $60,000 to the victim. So again, another success story. My last section is on accreditation. Back on June 2, we had our annual accreditation site review. Chief Mark Brooks, we tie is an assessor with Kalia, came in on Sunday, June 1 for department site-based assessment. We choose what areas we want them to look at. We chose school-based officers and juvenile offenders, multi-agency partnerships, agency training, and then internal affairs, including the Post Commission. Over the three and a half days, Chief Brooks met with superintendents and principals at both the Danvers High School and Essex Tech. He met with the town manager, Joe Cahill. He had opportunity to tour the MPTC Linfield Academy. He interviewed the executive director of NEMLEC, interviewed the fire chief and deputy chief, and toured the fire headquarters, interviewed a diverse selection of community members, met with District Attorney Paul Tucker and his staff, met and interviewed a compliance agent from the Post Commission, and participated in multiple roll calls and a ride-along with the department. Some prior areas of review we've done over the past four-year cycle include response to active threats, traffic engineering and enforcement, property and evidence operations, response to mental health, crime analysis, communications, detainee management, and recruitment and selection. So each year, we choose usually three or four areas for them to examine when they're doing our review. Prior to his departure, Chief Brooks held an exit interview with Ms. Cahill, Captain Sandberg, Lieutenant Collet, and myself. We should be receiving Chief Brooks' final report any day now, as well as his recommendations on whether the Danvers Police Department should receive their 12th Kalia Award. We will appear before the Kalia Commission in the fall for a view of our final, the final vote for the commission about our accreditation status. The Danvers Police Department is one of three municipal agencies in Massachusetts who is accredited by Kalia, and we maintain compliance with 326 mandatory standards and additional 55 optional standards for 381 standards total. These standards are recognized nationally as accepted best practices in law enforcement. And that's all I have.
That's great, chief. Wow. All right, we'll take some questions. Dan, any questions for the chief?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned the kids on bikes, I guess, basically. Just looking at the Salem News, the police reports, one particular week towards the end of May, seemed every night there was a report of kids on bikes, various locations, downtown, Collin Street, et cetera. Is that still going on, these complaints?
Yes. You know, again, it's, tomorrow's gonna be a busy day. It's the last day of school, so we'll have a large presence in the square because middle school gets let out probably at 2, a little after 2, so we'll see a large group in the square. They continue, and we continue to address the issue the best we can. We've identified kids, we talked to the kids. There was incident at the mall a week or two ago. We seized four bikes from the mall, made the parents come to the station to pick them up and have, speak with the children. So we are continuing to address the issue as we go.
And a lot of times, they're gone by the time the patrol car shows up?
Yeah, typically, you know, again, the times that they're out are the times we start getting busy, usually around 2:00 in the afternoon, we start getting really busy with shoplifting accidents, so we're kind of drawn to different directions, but, you know.
Well, this particular week, it seemed to be like after 7:00 p.m.
Yeah.
7:00 to 9:30 or so.
Yeah. The mall's been a busy area as well, with the kids going down there.
All right, well, keep after it. Thank you. Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome. Dee, do you have any questions for the chief?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and apologies for being late. I was on father duty, the daughter had a flat, so. Thank you, chief, for the update. Speaking of the kids on bike, did I read somewhere that there were actually some kids that got their bike taken away?
Yes, that was the mall. We took four bikes from the mall, I think it was like a Friday afternoon. They were acting up in the mall parking lot. Our officers went down there, spoke to them, gave them a warning, saying, guys, enough's enough, knock it off. That same group, we got called back like an hour later. The ones who were spoken to the first time, their bikes were taken.
Okay. And the conversation with the parents went well?
It went well. You know, three came down that night, retrieved bikes, and had a conversation with the responding officers. One had to work and came in the next day, retrieved the bike, and had a conversation with the officers. But so far, we've had some positive interactions with the families.
Okay, thank you. Well, thanks for all you do. This is amazing, so thank you.
Great. Mike?
Yes, chief, I want to tell you, thank you for the information and your detectives. There's just two, right? Is that correct?
There is two right now with the promotion of Sergeant Moke, creates an opening in there. We have two officers actually attending a two-week detective school right now at Linfield Police Academy, so this is, I think this is the first full week. It's a 10-day MPTC training class where they learn a little bit about everything. They do fingerprinting, they learn about search warrants, they do, go to the morgue and do an autopsy. They do the whole gamut. It doesn't make them expert in all these areas, but introduce them to all the areas. So we have two offices at that school this week. So depending on how promotions go, we'll have people available and somewhat trained to go into those jobs.
So you'd be increasing the detective division?
Well, there should be a supervisor plus two detectives for now, so that'll be three. So it'll be one more.
Okay. Well, I can't help but tell you, I really want to give you a round of applause. Those two cases, that's just incredible. So, thank you, thank your detectives, and I hope they keep doing work like that, and if you could train some more people like that, that would be, that's awesome. Yeah, I do have a few questions. Foot patrols, how long do they hang out down the square?
It can be 25 to 45 minutes, depending on call volume, what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. We're trying to do that daily, or?
Couple times a day.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. Do you guys, are you working on, do you have, or are you thinking about some kind of a plan to deal with the bikes? Because it's probably gonna increase, and then the dirt bikes and the four-wheelers and all that garbage. Like, I see the cities are dealing with it, it's pretty difficult, and then they swarm. I don't know if there's anything that you're talking with there on the North Shore to combat that kind of activity?
Yeah, so luckily, we're, knock on wood, we do see the bicycles. We haven't seen the motorized ATVs and dirt bikes and stuff like that. I know businesses had some issues with that. When they have, they've actually reached out to the state police for some assistance, whether it's getting in the CAT team, which is the community action team, to help with enforcement. I know sometimes they use the air wing to help track them because, again, it's very dangerous, the same way it's dangerous to chase kids on bikes, chasing teens on ATVs is very dangerous. So they've used some other techniques to kind of try to track and see where they're going and stuff. But we haven't really seen the large-scale motorized dirt bikes ATV issues yet. There's a couple of e-bikes that we've had some conversations with, but luckily, we have not seen that extreme yet.
Right, right. And the bikes are scary because they don't make a sound.
Correct. And they're fast.
Yeah, they're fast. The numbers have gone way up on traffic stops. That's awesome. I hope you can keep doing that, and I'm sure that must have boosted the arrest number as well, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's awesome. Awesome to hear. Congratulations.
I think the e-citations have also helped a lot too, because now with the e-citations, it's a lot easier to do the citations. Before, you know, you're sitting out for like 20 boxes at 3:00 in the morning, it's pitch black, you're trying to write legibly the new e-citations. We pull up the laptop, we transfer the data, we print them out a lot quicker. Another topic that has come up recently with Mr. Bates was the tinted windows. We were able to purchase, they came in the other day, we now have three tint meters that will be deployed probably this week sometime. Two are the standard ones that will do just the window where it kind of, it's like a box that goes over the window and gives you the percentage of tint. The third one we purchased is a, it's a box, but it's magnetic, so it can go in the front and back of a windshield to do the tint of a windshield. Five-to-one, sorry, a four-to-12 shift, requested those. They're pretty They're pretty active doing the D-DAX and doing traffic enforcement, so they requested those. So we'll be able to purchase those this year, and we have three on my desk that will go out this week or next.
And what, and the fine for the tinted windows?
$255, I believe.
$200, wow. All right. Congratulations on all your promotions. That's very exciting, I'm sure, for all them folks. Yeah, I think we got everything. And the, the activity on the whole North Shore with the car breaks, is the information you're getting, is it one or two gangs doing this?
It's a group, group out of Lynn, group out of Malden. Lynn put out a bulletin recently. They identified 13 individuals. In one way, the other, we've had involvement with 12 out of 13 over the last year or two. So they're, they're around this area, and they're, they're looking for unlocked cars. And the bonus is they find the keys and they take off of the car.
Yeah, yeah. Well, everything is looking really great. I appreciate all that info. Thank you very much.
All set?
Yes.
Gardner?
I think congratulations to the officers who've been promoted, and most of my other questions were already asked and answered, so thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Gardner. Chief, great job. Love seeing the police walk through the, the officers walk through the square, the presence. It's nice to see that the numbers are up, and you're doing a great job. Congratulations to all the officers that got promoted, too.
Thank you.
While you're up there, can we, I'm gonna say, let's move. Is it okay, clerk? We'll move to item seven, where the police chief will discuss a liquor compliance violation. Can you tell us about that?
Sure. On Tuesday, June 3rd, Sergeant Smith, Officer Guyder, Officer Cash, Lieutenant Kelleher conducted alcohol compliance checks within the town of Davis, assisting them with two males, both under the age of 21. They actually helped us during, they were actually interns for us during the Davis High School internship program. Prior notice was, other checks were given to the community, and all procedures were followed. Lieutenant Kelleher and Officer Guyder observed the 18-year-old male enter Cappy's Liquor located at 158 Andover Street with the $20 bill that we provided. He was instructed to select a six-pack of Bud Light. The male followed these instructions and brought the six-pack to the register. Female employee processed the sale of the six-pack of beer without checking an identification. The gentleman walked outside to the cruiser, provided the officers with the change and the six-pack of beer. Lieutenant Kelleher and Officer Guyder entered the store, requested to speak to the manager. The manager was identified, informed of her employee had sold the alcohol to an underage person. The employee and the manager were both very cooperative, and we identified them. We returned the beer, got her $20 back, and they were advised that they'd be receiving some paperwork from the town.
Great. Questions, Gardner?
No, well, not to this specific case, but how many compliance checks were done, Chief?
I want to guess 40 to 50. I can get that number for you.
It was pretty much all the license holders?
We do every license holder that we can. There's certain places we can't go to. If it's closed, we can't go there. But we do every restaurant and/or package store, gas station that sells alcohol, everybody.
And so my point being that I want to thank the diligence, the compliance checks. It does keep all of the other 41, 40, whatever the number is. It lets us, as the licensing board, know that they're keeping up with their obligations. Thank you. That's all.
Mike?
Yes, Chief. Have you had any issues that you remember in your whole career with Cappies?
Not recently. I did talk to the clerk, and that store did change hands in August of 2023. So it is a newer owner. But prior to that, nothing significant, but did change ownership in 2023.
I didn't have any, I've never heard anything negative about them. I was surprised to hear that it happened.
Yeah, it was not on our radar at all, no.
Yeah, thank you.
Dan?
Thank you. It's unfortunate that mine who was served, it still happens occasionally. And we have a policy when we talk to these people that they should card everybody regardless of what, who they look like, what they look like. Most of the places that I frequent, not frequent, but visit, they're, they're doing their due diligence from the most part, but it still happens.
Right.
And I think it's imperative that we ask them to come before us so that we can have a conversation with them, to explain to them the seriousness of not observing minors.
I agree.
That's what I was gonna say. Looking to bring the Cappies before the board, maybe in our August meeting, and have the clerk notify them?
I can do that, certainly.
Dee, would you like to say something, please?
I'll second what Dan said.
You think that's good. Okay. Any other?
So, so don't we have to make that in the form of a motion in accordance?
Make that, yes.
By making that motion that we bring them, Cappies, before us at our next scheduled meeting for a hearing on the alleged violation.
I'll second.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just want to make sure for the clerk, usually we have specific language that's said under a certain mass general law, we would ask them to come back to consider revocation, suspension, or any other action they're on. Do we need that?
You're just, at this point, you're just asking them to come before the board. The rest will come in the motion at the next meeting. It'll be in the compliance letter that I send them.
Very good. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Madam Clerk, can you notify them, please?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Chief, thank you so much for everything. It was a great presentation. You got, you got good staff, and continue doing the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so why don't we jump back up to number three? Okay, the board will consider appointments to the zoning board of appeals. What do we have here? So we have Kevin Berwick. Would you like to go up to the podium?
While it's happening, Madam Chair, can I ask a clarifying question of the town manager?
Sure.
How many people are currently on the ZBA as active voting members? How many people are currently on the, on the ZBA as alternates? And how many openings do we have?
Sure. So we have one opening for a full voting member, and we have one opening as, as an alternate member. So we have one person serving as an alternate, whose name I have, I can find if you want me to, and four currently serving as full voting members.
So did that person not want to move to full?
That is my understanding, yeah.
Okay.
The last time we appointed an alternate was just temporarily. Becky Kilborn.
That's right, I remember that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that usually you would ask a serving alternate to move up if they had that desire. And I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, when we appointed her, I understand she did not want to, they're just filling in. So we have four active out of five, and one alternate out of two.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Kevin. Tell us about yourself and why you would like to be considered.
Sure. My name's Kevin Berich. I live at 34 Poplar Street. I think, I think I know all of you at least, at least a little bit, besides Ms. Cahill. Yeah, I, I don't think I'll be telling you a story you don't know, and that I, I ran to be sitting up there in the big chair in this last election. And I did it because I wanted to serve, serve my community. That, that election, I did not win, but I'd still like to try to find a way to serve, serve my community. And the opening came up on the ZBA, and it sounded like a good opportunity.
Excellent. Questions, Dan?
None.
Dee?
No, no questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Gardner?
Just a comment. The ZBA is, I consider the ZBA probably one of the toughest boards to be on, meaning there's always a winner, always a loser for the ZBA. ZBA is law. But the law is smart enough to know it can't anticipate every condition. Every single piece of property in town is unique in some way. There's no truth that are exactly alike. So it has a built-in process for allowances. Sometimes there are variances, sometimes there are other allowances. What's your, and I'm gonna ask this with the other applicant as well, what has your experience been with the ZBA? Have you had any direct experience with the ZBA personally, or as a neighbor? And what's your, what's your general attitude towards development in ZBA performance so far?
I have not had any personal interaction with the, with the ZBA, and I have not been a butter to, you know, someone that had to go before the ZBA. I think your comment is well-taken, right? The ZBA is not, although there is a winner and a loser sometimes out of that process, I think, I think they do a pretty good job of trying to thread the needle. Sometimes they do it with conditions, so that the public, watching out for the public good, even when a variance is necessary or warranted. And I think, you know, certainly from watching a lot of the meetings, I think they do a pretty good job of trying to make sure that each one of those findings is in place for each of those variances, so that they're not just making decisions that are arbitrary.
Thank you. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you, Kevin. And we have, let's see, Chris Dombowski. Hi, Chris. Please go up and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Chris Dombowski, town meeting member, precinct one. I think I'm going into my 13th year. Reside 18 Tress Street. Born and raised, second-generation builder in town. Have had numerous interactions with the ZBA on good side, bad side, being a builder in town, using it as, you know, something's too big, and customer wants it that big, and it either gets shot down, it gets accepted. I think I'm looking to serve the town some more, now that I do have the time, that my kids are now older and slightly moving on out of the baseball fields and the hockey rinks and whatnot. I think that's it.
Okay, questions, Dan?
Thank you. You're a contractor?
Yes.
What type of work do you perform?
General contractor, additions, remodeling, kitchens, bathrooms, decks.
Everybody always has a permit, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. And what's your experience with the client going before ZBA?
What do you, what?
Do you have clients that have gone before the ZBA for findings, variances, et cetera?
Yes.
Do you participate, or just?
I have, well, I should say, my father used to participate. I personally haven't participated yet. I do, do see, possibly I might have to participate in something coming up, but time will tell.
Do you see a conflict with your work and being on the ZBA?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Thanks, that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Dee?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Mike?
Quick statement, are you gonna be comfortable when you have to drop the hammer on somebody?
Yeah. Yes.
I got that.
Get it?
I've been on both sides of it, so I know the feeling.
It's awful. So, no, thank you. Thank you for stepping up.
Thanks, Mike. Gardner?
And same general question. You have had experience with the ZBA, thank you, both supportive and not necessarily supportive of your clients, of your customers. In general, what do you, the tenor of the ZBA, are they, tell me what your thoughts are on, on the general effort they put forward.
So the experience I've had, they, they're willing to work with the client, customer, however you want to look at it, within the parameters that they're allowed to. You know, if you're looking for six inches, and they can only give you three, I feel as if they've been pretty good in giving you that variance and giving you the finding if necessary. I haven't really had a negative experience with them. I can't speak for my father when he did it, but.
He's not on the board.
Exactly. Other than that, I mean, I just, I feel as if they're the, other than the planning board, they're the next line of defense in this town from keeping it getting too crazy, building-wise, you know, oversized, especially with the new accessory dwelling units and all that stuff coming about. You know, they're definitely necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Gardner. Is there anybody prepared to make a motion?
I will, if I may. Madam Chair, I would like to make the motion to appoint Chet Dombrowski to the ZBA as the full voting member, term to end January 2028.
Do I have, and it's Chris, not Chet, right?
I'm sorry.
Chris. Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
If I could, before, before that, I'd like to, I'm interested in Dan, your thought process.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the background. He has a little more experience with the ZBA than Kevin does. I think Kevin will do a good job as an alternate, and give him the opportunity to learn the position and the role. So I would be prepared to motion to make him the alternate. I think Christopher has a little more experience, knowledge of construction, zoning, as such.
Okay. All reasonable. I just wanted to know, okay.
Hey, Gardner, do you want to have any, any more discussion? How do you feel?
No, I was comfortable the other way, but I, I'm happy with Dan's motion as well.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I, apologies. I thought we were appointing two people.
We are, yeah, we are. One is a permanent.
Full voting member, and then the second is an alternate. And we have two applicants, two candidates.
My only concern, and this is not about you, Christopher, as a person, it's because of his profession, how, how often will he have to recuse himself?
As many times as if he was an alternate.
But as an alternate, he wouldn't be a voting member necessarily.
But he would still be hearing unless he recludes himself.
He'd be, as an alternate?
That's the voting. He's, when I served him as an alternate on the ZBA,
Yep.
I could participate in conversation and ask questions. I could not vote as the alternate unless I was appointed to by the chair.
Okay.
To step in for somebody else.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Apologies. I think I, I thought we were voting for two full members. Apologies.
No, it's one full, one alternate.
Okay. So could I just send my second? How does that work?
You want to make another motion?
Well, I, I'm not, Madam Chair, we have a motion and a second. It's up to you whether to call for a vote or not.
But, but, pardon me, Dee, you're saying you're not seconding it?
That's correct.
He wants to remove, he wants.
If you want to remove your second, I will second it.
Okay.
For the sake of process and voting.
So we have a motion?
I made the motion.
Dan made the motion, Madam Clerk. You have that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we have a second.
Gardner.
By Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay.
Then I would like to make a motion that we appoint.
Did Maureen vote?
Yes.
So it was three votes.
Three to two against your motion.
So I'm making, I'm voting, I'm sorry, I'm voting for Chris.
So that makes, so that would be three, two.
I'm sorry, yeah. I'm gonna vote for Chris. So that's three, two.
Okay.
And then, do we have a motion to?
And I'll make a motion to appoint Kevin Berick as the ZBA as the alternate member, term to end on January 28.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. So we have, you have that, right?
I have it.
By the way, thank you both for volunteering. This town runs on volunteers, and I appreciate people taking their time.
And I think, too, Kevin and Chris, I mean, everybody has an opinion, right? Chris has, does have the experience. He's been living here. Kevin, you're doing great, I think, with Chris knowing with the building laws and things like that. And you can really learn, maybe, being on that, because we value both of you. Thank you.
In my 22 years of doing it, I've gone before the zoning board twice. I've had a customer that's gone before them twice.
So like Gardner said, it's a, it's a very good position, and it's very important in this town. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. So we will go to the board. We'll consider the appointments to the zoning board of appeals and to the board of registrars. We have motion, do we have a motion to reappoint Kevin Jobin to the ZBA as a full voting member, term to end January 2028. Do I have a second?
Are you asking for a motion?
Yes. I'll make the motion. Oh, I can't make the motion. You want to?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Aye. And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And do we have a motion to reappoint?
I, I'd like to move to reappoint Marilyn Hazel to the board of registrars, term to end on January 2028.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Marilyn is here tonight. I just want to point that out.
Oh, Marilyn, would you like to get up? Yeah, I'm sorry, Marilyn, I didn't even see you. Would you like to get up and say hello? Please do. Thank you. Thank you.
I would just like to comment, though, that she's been a great asset to the board, to the board of registrars.
Thank you, Kevin. And she was an excellent teacher, too.
Appreciate everything she does, yes.
Hello. It's nice to be appointed by my former student. It's been my pleasure these last three years to serve on the board of registrars. When I came before you, went for my initial appointment, I noted how I had been not only active in politics, but that I had been a high school teacher here in Danvers and taught civics and always tried to set an example for my students. And I considered being appointed voting registrar to be putting my money where my mouth is, so to speak. So, we have a really good cohesive group. We get along very well under the excellent leadership of Kathy Ellsworth, so it's been my pleasure.
Thank you, Marilyn. Yeah, you, thank you for coming tonight. You do a great job and we really appreciate it. And then, let's see, so, so we'll do the motion right here to reappoint for a second term, three-year term, term to end January 2028, Marilyn Hazel. Do I have a second?
That was made, seconded and voted, I believe.
Yep.
Wait, who made the motion?
I did.
Gardner made the motion, okay. And then who seconded?
Dee.
Dee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marilyn, for coming.
And then, let's see, and then we have this one next, right Clerk, right here?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're looking to reappoint Paul Pollock to the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee for a one-year term, term to end January 2026. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded?
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Paul's not here. Thank you very much, Paul. All right. We have all that. Let's see, we will go next, as we move things out of order. So we will go to, the board will vote to accept gifts in accordance with MGL Chapter 4453A. Who's here to speak? Chris? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Chris Amborn, Director of Natural Resources. Tonight, I'm pleased to bring forward a number of generous donations for the board's consideration and acceptance. These gifts, ranging from memorial benches to substantial in-kind contributions, represent continued investment in the town's public spaces, community pride, and shared history. First, the town has received several requests to place memorial benches in honor or in memory of loved ones at locations throughout town. Each request has been reviewed and approved by the appropriate department and committees. They include a bench in honor of Lisa Walters-Horn to be placed at the main entrance walkway of the Thorpe School, a bench in memory of Derek Lyons to be located behind the Twyfield backstop at Plains Park, and three benches at the Center Street Training Field, one in memory of Raymond Gilbert, United States Marine Corps, one in memory of Private John Gilligan, United States Army, and one in memory of Corporal Edmund Gilligan, United States Army. Each bench carries a donation of $2,500 totaling $12,500 in contributions. We're honored to facilitate their placement in meaningful locations around town. Madam Chair, I understand that the memorial bench donations require a separate vote from the additional in-kind donations. Do you want to do that now or separately?
We could do it separately.
Okay. Next, we're also grateful to present a series of in-kind donations from the Friends of Endicott Park, which continue to support improvements to one of our most treasured public spaces. These contributions include up to $30,000 toward the renovation of the main entryway to the visitor center. This will focus on replacing the historic carriageway door, improving access while preserving the building's architectural character. Additionally, the Friends are donating $5,000 to support the animal barn operations, including veterinary care, barrier services, feed, and overall upkeep, ensuring that the barn remains well-maintained and enrich, enriching experience for all who visit. $2,500 for a new educational exhibit in the nature center. This interactive display will offer learning opportunities on ecology, wildlife, and conservation. $3,500 for the planting of up to four new trees in the park, adding beauty, shade, and long-term environmental benefits. And lastly, $500 for signage in the community gardens, helping users navigate and better engage with this space. Together, these in-kind gifts total $41,500, all in support of Endicott Park's continued growth and improvement. I do have a few updates on projects that were approved, donations that were approved in 2024. First was the corn crib renovation by the Friends of Endicott Park. This was completed late 2024 at a cost of just over $15,000. This project restored the historic timber-framed barn once used to dry and store corn. Its preservation maintains a rare piece of Endicott Park's agricultural heritage. And just last week, we celebrated the formal opening of the education garden, along with the dedication of our new flagpole at Endicott Park. This project was made possible by a generous $25,000 grant from Cell Signaling Technologies of Danvers, with matching funds from the Friends of Endicott Park. The flagpole replacement was made possible through a partnership donation between the Friends of Endicott Park and the Rotary Club of Danvers. Thank you.
You do a terrific job. We can't say enough. I mean, we love it. Okay, board members, do I have a motion on the benches?
I move in accordance with the MGL 44 Section 53A, I move to approve the acceptance of donations in the amount of $12,500 to install memorial benches in various locations around the town.
Wonderful. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and now do we have a motion for the acceptance of the in-kind goods and services? Would someone like to make that motion?
I can.
Okay, Michael? Thank you.
All right. In accordance with MGL 44 Section 53A, move to approve the acceptance of in-kind goods and services in the amount of $41,500 from the Friends of Endicott Park and Company for improvements at Endicott Park.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
I'd also just like to recognize two of the board members of the Friends of Endicott Park here tonight, Bill and Lois Mackenzie. Great partners, they've, they've done tremendous work.
You want to get up, Bill? Get up there.
Thank you.
You do a great job and can't say enough about it. I mean, right there, we love, we love Endicott Park, you know? Terrific. So let's move on. And we will do, next, we are, oh, I'm sorry, I took Madam Clerk's paper. Excuse me. All right. So, we did that. Let's just make sure we've got the gifts, since we've moved things around. The board will finalize the two, oh, before I, before I, we start, I want to discuss that, with all these committees, that I think at this time.
Are we doing the meeting schedule?
No, I'm going to do, I'm going to do an appointment. I'm going to appoint two members as a subcommittee to work with the town manager on goals and objectives, since she was just hired, 5/12/2025. That committee will consist of two board members, working in August with the town manager on what's important to be worked on, to prioritize, set reasonable and attainable goals for her, because with Jill coming in May, you know, we did that last year with the previous town manager, and we want to, want her to give us her goals and objectives. And then, once we do that, then we'll report back. The board gets about seven of them, we make them down to five. And at this time, I would like to ask, and you don't have to agree to it if you don't want to do it, but I'd like to ask, Dan, would you like to be on that subcommittee?
Yes, thank you.
And Mike, I'd like to ask you.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to appoint Dan Bennett and Mike Bean for the subcommittee to work with the town manager for goals and objectives, what's important to be worked on, prioritized, set reasonable and attainable goals for her. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
When would you like us to report back?
I think, what do you think, Dan, like? September?
Okay.
I'd say September.
That's reasonable.
I think that's reasonable, Mike. You can sit with Jill. Is that good for you?
And can I ask through you to our fellow board members, any thoughts they have to send them to us?
That would be wonderful.
They can send them in to Ann, just so we can take a look at what the other members have in mind.
Gardner, you good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Dee? Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much for doing that, too. All right. So now we will go, the board will finalize the 2025 meeting schedule. What I'd like to bring to people's attention is that we had changed the meeting to September 9th, so.
September 2.
Yeah, September 2. It's going to be on the 9th, from the 2nd of September to September 9th. Other than that, everybody should have a select board meeting schedule.
July only.
Oh, yeah. And then, on July, we have only one meeting, if needed. If not, then we're not going to have a July, and then we'll have one meeting in August. Is everybody okay with that? Do I have a motion?
When do you need to make the decision to post the agenda?
48 hours. What?
To advertise a meeting.
Okay.
The deadline would be like Friday next week for me to get an advertisement to the newspaper. I don't have any requests at this time.
So, Madam Chair, either we have a meeting or we don't, given that.
In July?
Yeah. Given that it needs to be done by next Friday, we have to make a decision tonight.
I'm going to say we don't have a meeting in July unless something urgent comes up. Is everybody okay with that? Gardner?
I'm fine.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan?
This is Chair, you can call that. Yes.
Yeah, if I'm going, good, okay.
And, Madam Chair, speaking of meeting, and Jill and Cari don't hate me, this new board hasn't talked about it yet, but could we move the meeting times to 7:00 PM? I know we talked about it before, and we had come to an agreement of 6:30. And I know a lot of committees in town meet at 7:00.
That was your start time tonight, wasn't it?
I was 6:35, but.
Let's have discussion.
I would, I would make a point to counter that, Dee. If you look at the other committees, 6 o'clock, 6:30, 6 o'clock, 9:15 AM, 6 o'clock, 6:30, 2:30, 5 o'clock, only the HRIC meets at 7:00 besides ZBA or planning. All the other committees meet earlier.
And also, previously, we were at 7:00, or even 7:30, I can't remember what it was.
7:00, yeah.
It was 7:00. And we worked to move it back because we felt it was more accommodating if, if the meetings run long, if we have a packed agenda. I think there were people who preferred either 6 or 6:30. Some people prefer to 6 o'clock start.
I'm a 6 o'clock guy.
I, I would do that, too.
I compromise to 6:30.
But I think we compromise to 6:30.
That's too early.
So I, I, I would still advocate for 6:30.
All right, so why don't we take a vote, right? What would you like, Mike, what do you, what would you like to do? What time?
6:30.
So there's your consensus.
It's fine.
I would have done 7:00.
I think, I think 7:00 would be.
So we have 6:30, Gardner?
I'm saying 6:30.
Mike?
6:30.
I was saying 7:00.
6:30.
Okay. So, the meeting's going to be at 6:30.
I will keep 6:30 for now and bring it up another time.
That's right. Thank you.
Go to your chair.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're going to move on to the board. We'll discuss liaison assignments for the coming year. First, I want to thank everybody, trying to juggle this around in everybody's busy work schedule. We're going to have the Accessibility Commission, Gardner.
Thank you.
The Affordable Housing, Dan. Budget Conference Committee will be myself. Cable Advisory is Dee. Danvers Cares is myself. HRIC is Dee. Rail Trail Advisory is Mike. River Committee is Dee. Town Manager Evaluation is going to be the Chair, plus one is going to be Maureen Gardner. And Transportation Advisory, Mike. And Preservation, Dan. Is everybody okay with those?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Very nice to be working with, everybody's willing to work together. That's what I like. Thank you.
It was peer pressure.
It was peer pressure. Okay. Next will be the town manager report to the board on various items of interest. This is town manager.
Thank you. Since we had the Endicott Park presentation earlier, and you guys are in the room, I do want to say I had the opportunity to be at the park twice last week, once for the dedication of the garden and the flagpole, which was incredible to see, and hear from the staff that worked there. But even more so, the next day, I went for a sustainable gardening event, and that's when you got to see it in action. So if you haven't seen it, full of people and kids, please get over there. You know, there was the, the team, the team in that park, to see them interacting with field trips that are there and kids that are there, and educational events for adults. That's what Sustainable, the Sustainable Gardening Event was about, was really incredible. So it was, thank you, Chris, your team, thank you, Friends, Endicott Park, the Rotary, and Cell Signaling for, for making all that happen. And also, if you did not attend the Sustainable Gardening Event, but you get an opportunity to go to an event with Sharon and Erica and that crew from DPW, it was incredibly informative. The beginning was all about water, water conservation, how our water permitting works, something I think is important that residents become more familiar with. It'll help us, it'll help kind of frame some of our thoughts moving forward on water use and, and how we conserve. So, I recommend, if you haven't seen it, also, they have some great stuff on the webpage, and a lot of, pointed to a lot of benefits to community members on rebates and assistance that way. So, take a look if you haven't seen it. I want to highlight, I spoke at my first select board meeting about the community roundtable events that I planned on hosting, so they are coming together, talked about them today with the leadership team. They will be Thursday, every other Thursday evening this summer, starting, so there'll be four for now, hopefully. If people come and want to come talk to me, I'll keep going in the fall. So, July 17th at Endicott Park, July 31st at North Shore Community College, August 14th at the PBD Institute Library, and August 28th at the Senior Center. The community, everyone from the community is welcome to attend. We encourage town meeting members to come and join us, as well as members of our Boards, Committees, and Commissions. It's really an opportunity to, it'll be me, and depending on, we're going to build it around some topic, general topic areas, just to kind of get the conversation started. Of course, we're ready to listen to whatever people bring. But I'll be bringing team members with me. We're going to base it, we're going to use some of the information from the strategic plan to kind of frame the discussion, to get some conversation starters out there in case people are being shy. So please join me, those four dates, we are going to advertise on the town website, towns newsletters, both the senior newsletter and the superintendent's, social media, flyers at public buildings and local businesses, our partner organizations, and neighborhood associations, and... And we talked about, I just, I found out today that we have, we are able, I think we'll email directly to town meeting members and members of our Boards, Committee, and Commissions, so that you guys all have that information. So please come and join me. This is an important part of how I get to know all of you, so I can meet those goals and objectives that we're about to sit down and set.
Can you repeat the dates, please?
Sure. July 17th at Endicott Park. And those, I can give you general topic ideas. The park, we're going to, and again, we'll talk about anything, but this is to get the conversation started. July 17th, Endicott Park, recreation, the park, open spaces, rail trail, harbors, rivers, all things kind of natural resource. I'm guessing Chris will be with me. July 31st is North Shore Community College. There, we're going to do kind of all things traditional DPW and Casper Plan related, so trash, roads, water, electric, bring that all to me there, and resiliency. August 14th at the library. We'll talk about the library, planning, economic development, downtown, historic district, arts and culture, things like that. And, and again, this isn't a presentation from us. This is really to listen to you. We're going to bring stuff to kind of get conversations started. And August 28th at the Senior Center, community services, senior services, veteran services, public health, accessibility, and things of that nature.
And the times.
We're going to do them in the evening. The times are going to vary depending on the availability of the rooms, because some have events on either side. But it'll be in general between hours of 5:00 and 7:00.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sure. A couple town hall closures coming up. The Juneteenth celebration, or acknowledgement, is on June 19th, this Thursday, so town hall will be closed. And then, of course, for July 4th, town hall will be closed. Reminder that we have Falcon Fest Downtown Rewind coming up on Tuesday, June 24th, 5:00 to 8:00. It's on Maple Street, starting at CVS and going towards Maple Square. They've worked with town staff, including the police department, to coordinate. My understanding is, the police have people at each end for street closures, as well as officers in, in, mingling throughout the event. The rain date is June 26. And lastly, not a donation you need to accept, but just as a thank you to some of our community partners, we did receive notice today that St. John's Prep has made donations to both the Friends of Endicott Park and the Friends of the Rail Trail on behalf of their students, parents, and athletes who use these amenities. And I just think it's important that we point out all the different ways our community organizations work together to support the town. I think, as I said earlier, for the appointments and the volunteers who have stepped up, this organization and this town runs on volunteers and community organizations working together. So, thank you, St. John's Prep, and thank you to the Friends of Endicott Park and the Friends of the Rail Trail for everything that you do. I should also mention Wayne Marquis' event. I'm sure all of you will later. I obviously didn't have the chance to meet Wayne, but that was a true testament to who he was. You felt like you knew him by the time he left there. I had big shoes to fill there. But I'm really, I was really impressed with the turnout, even in the rain, and it was a very moving ceremony. So thank you to the committee, including Anne and Judy and that team, and Dave Mountain, that team internally, as well as Wayne's family. So thank you, and thank you to everyone who came.
Excellent. Thank you, Joe. Okay, so, the Board will consider the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to correspondence, select Board, new business, previous business, updates, and select Board closing comments. Mike, do you want to start?
I was just going to say that the Wayne Marquis celebration was really awesome. They did a great job. Everybody who participated, thank you very much. You guys did an excellent job. I don't think I'll get one of them, but Wayne certainly deserves one. Thank you, that's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, Gardner?
I attended as well, and I encourage everybody to go down there. The speeches were great, and I know that they're being rebroadcast, I think, on We Are Danvers. And for those who, for those, first of all, I want to thank the, the town, the departments that designed and built it. If you haven't been there, the, the plaque is in the, in the middle of, and it's, it's actually interactive plaque. You can, you can do the QR code that's on the plaque and see a interview that Wayne did with DCAT at one point. And I would also encourage people to look for the Easter eggs. There are a lot of things that are very particular to Wayne down there, including the design of the park, which itself is a guitar, because he was such a music lover. So, and it is at the, at the confluence of the, of the various trails, going east-west and now south, so... North, I'm sorry. So, my mic's acting very loud. So, I appreciate all of the town departments getting together and doing that. It was, it's a wonderful tribute to him. As far as correspondence, I received some, but none that are worthy of response. Thank you.
Okay, Dan?
Thank you, yes. Couple of things. First of all, I got a complaint from a neighbor downtown about the noise at Berry Tavern on Thursday, June 5th, loud and going to, I think, 11 o'clock at night. So there has been a complaint about their outdoor entertainment. Or, I don't know if it was outdoors or just the windows were open, but it was loud anyways. The other is the hazardous mitigation plan that we had the presentation on last meeting. I did review it, and I have a few comments. I did send them in to whoever was going to make corrections. The, on page 41, they had the planning board as being elected. It's not, it's appointed by the town manager. Number 4, Chapter 3, Page 45, 46, it talks about a public meeting flyer. I never saw a public meeting flyer. And the last, uh, meeting last, last time was supposed to be for public hearing, and it was supposed to be advertised. I didn't see anything being advertised. And we had low attendance, whether it was people here. I don't think they were here for that presentation. Oh, be that as it may. Page 247 to 253, Table 87. It talked a lot about the previous plan and the goals that were set. And I just want to point out that of the goals that were set, nine have been delayed. Three because of funding, I understand that. Five have been completed, eight are in progress. Four of the other delayed, they're delayed, but they're not being carried forward under the new plan. I don't understand, it was something important at that point in time, but now it's not. I'm going to ask through you, Madam Chair, if sometime in the fall, we can get some, kind of an update on the hazardous mitigation plans going forwards and how we're going to address the ones that were delayed in the previous plan. And I won't bother reading them now, but... We have these plans, they're important, but eight are still in progress from five years ago. If that's okay.
Yes, that would be great, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Dee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did attend the Wayne Marquis event as well. It was, like everyone said, a really beautiful tribute to him. Thanks to David Mountain and the whole staff for, for that. It was, it was really well done. I attended the flagpole and the garden at Endicott Park as well. Amazing sight. Thanks to Mr. Mackenzie and the Endicott Park, the Friends of the Endicott Park, and Chris. Really well done. I also attended the Pride event at the police station, last Thursday, I think. Thanks Chief and Lieutenant Robb and the HRIC for putting that together. And today, we also had an event for, to celebrate Juneteenth, right here. Thanks to the HRIC again, and everyone who attended, as well as the North Shore Juneteenth Association. Madam Chair, just a question about, and I don't know if I'm missing it. We had talked about appointing some people to have like some kind of airport commission.
The subcommittee, right? We talked about that.
Is that something that we're going to try to tackle in the fall, or...
I say yes, we did. Mike, you were talking about, right, doing the airport?
Yeah, I'm not...
Subcommittee?
Yeah.
And I would like to be on those, well.
Gardner, okay. So, do we have two members? Would you want to be on that, Dee?
No, no, I was just saying, because we were going to appoint some...
Public.
Public members.
Public people, right, okay.
Yeah.
To, to, to be like, I forget what we called it.
We could have a liaison.
But then, we never really said when that's coming up or how that appointment process will happen. And I just wanted us to have that, maybe as one of the agenda items in the fall.
In August, we could do that, right? Our August meeting or September meeting, yeah.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Obviously, when we have some of these committees, we sometimes look for help in the appointments. And generally, we look to the town moderator to act as, as a person, to vet the people, to take applications, to, to discuss participation. And maybe that, that might be appropriate, a consideration, appropriate consideration, or the town manager. But, that may be a thought.
I think that's, Joe, could we look into that? With the town moderator, have the town manager look into that? But Dee, thank you for bringing that up. I think, we did talk about that, that's very important. I know that I've attended some of the Beverly Airport meetings, as well as, I think, everybody here. So, yeah, and, and we want to also invite them back. We talked about invite, Joe?
Thank you. So, Member Bean had brought that up to me early on in my time here as a, in an email. So, Anne is working on setting up a meeting with the two airport commissioners and myself, as well as a meeting with the airport general manager and the Chair of the Airport Commission. So, hopefully, those will get on the schedule for the summer. And then Rodney shared with me that they had followed up with the GM for the, I think he was coming quarterly or something, so he would be coming in the fall as well. So, once I, when I, and when I have my in-person meeting with him, we'll get a date for him to be in front of all of you in the fall.
Wonderful, that's great. Thank you, Will.
No, that's all, thank you.
All right, and, yeah, I, I can't say enough about Dave Mountain, Chris, I mean, the Endicott Park. Billy, you've done a lot of work there, too. Thank you for what you do. I also was at the flagpole garden with Wayne Marquis' dedication, which was unbelievable. Wayne was a wonderful man, treated everybody the same, right? What'd they say when, when, when he wasn't sure? Did he pull his neck back or something? He just, he wouldn't say anything, right? Did you hear that? See that? Some of the Pride events, too, we were there. Thank you, everybody, for volunteering with the committees. This is really good that the Board, I really only had to call everybody and they were ready to jump on a committee. And we do want more and more volunteers. So if anybody's willing to, please get ahold of us. And Warren, Steve's, sent us some emails about the Clickers, town manager, if we could look into that and start looking into, you know, pros and cons on how to do that for town meeting. That would be great. And I just want to say, thank you. And we will go on to, what is it, a motion now to... Want to close? That's it, right?
No.
And, Dan has to finish, yeah? Thank you, Dan has to say his closing comment, please, Dan, thank you.
Please, if you see a vet, please say thank you.
Motion to adjourn, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.